Good evening and welcome to the Town Board Work Session for Tuesday, March 16th, 2020. We're coming to you this evening from our respective home offices using Zoom online meetings to conduct this meeting entirely virtually. While some of us have used this technology before in our professional lives, others of us are newbies to this. And certainly, this is the first ever virtual Town Board meeting. So we all appreciate your patience and understanding as we learn this new way of working together. That said, it is extremely important to all of us that we find ways to continue to conduct important government business. And we are fully committed to figuring this out and getting it right and making sure that we are providing access to the public. So for those of you who are joining us tonight via the YouTube link, please feel free to use the chat function to ask questions, which will then be related to the Town Board. I've been asked by our attorneys to do something a little different tonight, which is to do a roll call. So I will call out everybody who's on this call. And if you guys can just acknowledge that you're here, that would be great. So Jeremy Slan, Deputy Supervisor.
You're sorry.
Lisa Katz, Council Member.
Here.
Lauren Levin, Council Member. Jason Lichtenball, Council Member.
Here.
Jill Shapiro, Town Administrator.
Here.
Nick Ward-Willis, Town Attorney.
Good evening, present.
And Christina Papes, Town Clerk. Do we have her yet? Okay, I think Christina will be joining us shortly. We're also joined by Lauren Cascone.
Here.
And you might also see Lyle Anderson, who works for Newcastle Community Media Center, who is helping us with the streaming of this event. And I think we also, is that Rob Deary we have as well?
Yes, I'm still here.
Excellent. Thank you all. The Town Attorneys have also asked me to read this statement at the top of the meeting. So I have confirmed with Town Council that tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with the Governor's March 13th, 2020 Executive Order 202.2, which suspends certain provisions of the open meeting law in order to allow a municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view tonight's work session meeting, and a transcript will be provided at a later date. I've done a roll call of the board just now. There is a quorum present for this meeting. I've also confirmed to Town Clerk that this meeting has been duly noticed. We have fulfilled our legal notice requirements by posting notice on the town's bulletin boards, faxing to the library, news organizations, et cetera, and also posting on the town's homepage of its website and listing this on the town's Facebook page. A link has also been provided to the public so that you can view the meeting. And I'm also advised that the link is active and working. Furthermore, a video of this meeting will be made available on Public Access TV and the town's website. And that's the end of our official statement. So before we get started with the agenda for tonight's session, we wanted to start the meeting with a brief synopsis of the recent news regarding the COVID-19 pandemic and the work that your Town Board has been doing to prepare for and to respond to this crisis. So as you all know, the state, county, and town of Newcastle have all declared a state of emergency, and each of us have started to feel the material impact of these emergency orders. Specifically, a couple of things that we've all started to feel. Restaurants, bars, movie theaters, and gyms have been closed. Delivery and takeout orders are permitted. And we have some fabulous restaurants in town that are offering expanded menus, as well as merchants who are willing to make home deliveries. And Lauren Levin will be telling us more about that in just a moment. Also, gatherings of more than 50 people are not permitted. This is a somewhat fluid number. So here in Newcastle, we have advised residents to avoid groups of 20 or more people. The CDC has recently issued guidance that is even more restrictive. They've talked about 10 or more people. The bottom line is that we must all practice social distancing for our own health, but more importantly, for our friends and our neighbors who are vulnerable. This disease is spreading rapidly and has a high rate of hospitalization and mortality. And we'll hear more about these most recent statistics from Jeremy Slan in a moment as well. So my guidance, my advice is to stay at home and to save lives. All local governments have been called upon to reduce their workforce by at least 50% and to allow non-essential employees to stay at home. Here in Newcastle, our Town Administrator Jill Shapiro swiftly implemented a staggered work schedule that has brought us into compliance with this mandate without compromising our ability to provide critical municipal services. And Jill is to be commended for her incredible work. We have closed town facilities, including the Community Center and Senior Center, the Art Center, and the Chapua Performing Arts Center. However, the Police Department is open to the public, and we've established a locked drop box outside of the Police Department entrance for residents to be able to drop off documents. However, to the extent practical, we ask that you will call or email Town Hall. All of our schools, as we all know, will be closed for a minimum of two weeks, starting on Wednesday, March 18th, 2020, and subsequent to meeting certain requirements for distance learning plans, provision of food plans, and childcare plans. Some residents are unaware that the town actually does not oversee the schools. However, we are in close contact with the Chapua Central School District, as well as neighboring school districts in Austin, Byram Hills, Briar Cliff, and Bedford, among others. We relay information, but please also direct your questions about schools to the school districts in which your children are enrolled. As many residents have read, the great outdoors is actually the best place that you can be during this crisis because the virus disperses in places where it's not contained. That said, the county has provided guidance that local governments should restrict access to places where people congregate. And this includes, unfortunately, playgrounds. Therefore, the town of Newcastle is restricting access to active parkland, such as playgrounds and ballfields. Passive recreation is encouraged, provided that residents maintain a six-foot social distance from one another. One last update from me before I turn it over to my colleague. The town and our partners at the Newcastle Community Media Center, Lyle Anderson, who I mentioned earlier, as well as Carrie Crams, have built a new application called the Newcastle Citizen Assistance Registry. Yesterday, the Newcastle Police Department called on all 27 of our residents that are on our senior watch list to check in with them and just to make sure that they were okay. So we are looking to expand that list to all of our potentially vulnerable levels and to be able to both increase our outreach to folks and also to get a sense of the level of need so that we're prepared to respond. You can sign up online at mynewcastle.org/registry, or you can call Beth Steiger, who's a senior social worker, at 238-2093. All of the information, personal information that's provided to the registry is confidential and will not be shared with the public. So that's all from me. I'm actually going to kick it over to Jeremy to talk a little bit about the latest updates from the state, including most recent statistics. But before I do, I just wanted to say, on a personal note, I want to thank the entire board for stepping up in my recent absence, and especially my friend and colleague Deputy Town Supervisor Jeremy Slan, who I think has shown tremendous and steady leadership during these uncertain times. And I really could not hope for a better partner and deputy. I sincerely thank you, Jeremy.
Well, thank you, Ivy. And we're glad that you're here with us now. The Town Board and Jill, all of us have been working together very diligently. It's something that's important to us. We're all here for a reason. And I know I speak on behalf of all of us when I say that everything that we're doing now is putting residents first, whether it's from the first responders, whether it's from the staff in town, whether it's the Town Board, all of us have you as a priority, and we mean that sincerely. The fact of the matter is, at least in terms of what's being shared, and I apologize when I look down to look at certain numbers, what we're learning from the governor, and I've been pretty diligent about watching whatever he's having a press conference, is the numbers are concerning, but that does not mean, as I've said before, we've said before, that the sky is falling, that all is bleak. It may get worse before it gets, it will probably get worse before it gets better. But the governor really, really stresses this social distancing, staying at home unless you're an essential worker, such as a healthcare provider or a first responder. Just earlier today, at the Governor's press conference, he indicated, and these numbers are fluid and likely have changed, that there are 100, pardon me, 1,374 confirmed cases of COVID-19. Of those, 264 are hospitalized, which is a hospitalization rate of 19%. Only a couple of days ago, on Sunday, when he presented the numbers in New York State, it was 729 positive cases and 137 people were hospitalized. Of those, 65 were in the ICU and 46 were intubated, again, around 19%. The number that we're seeing in terms of people who are confirmed, that's obviously consistent with an increased number of testing. So that comes as no surprise. Many people have asked, and repeatedly, other people here in Newcastle who have been confirmed with coronavirus. And I have indicated when asked that we will be advised when that does happen, and we'll discuss how to share that information as a team, as a family here on the board. But I think it's safe to say it'd be naive to believe that there aren't people in Newcastle who are confirmed. They're everywhere in terms of the population, hearing between 40% to 70%, depending on what numbers you see, will be infected or are infected. A couple of things that I think are relevant that the governor shared was that there was a grave concern about the number of people that will create a wave on the healthcare system if we do not do the stay-in-place, staying at home, limiting social contact, staying no closer than six feet. And again, bear with me as I just pull up the numbers that he wanted, that he shared at his press conference earlier today. The healthcare system can, they're expecting, as things peak out over the next 45 days, that we could see between 55,000 to 110,000 hospital beds being required. Additionally, there could be between 18,000 roughly 500, to I believe it was 37,200 ICU beds that are going to be required over, not necessarily over the next 45 days, but as this peaks over the next 45 days and beyond. It may not be you or me that is in danger, and you and I may completely be fine. We may show no symptoms. But it's our neighbors, it's our family members, and frankly, it's people that you don't know who deserve as much love and respect and kindness as any one of us here. So I encourage you to follow the regulations, the rules, the guidelines. The governor has indicated on more than one occasion that things can become more strict. Right now, for example, Ivy referenced what's closed and what is open. That can change if the governor decides to do so. He's been working with Connecticut and New Jersey to have a unified front because unfortunately, there is nothing in terms of a set plan from the federal government. So we don't want people going from New York to Connecticut or New Jersey or vice versa, because there's different rules or regulations there. That defeats the purpose of what our state is trying to do. So again, yes, it's frightening. The numbers are ugly. It's okay to be scared. It's okay to be concerned. It's a healthy thing to have because it forces us to recognize that we need to do the right thing, and it's sobering. But we are a tight-knit family, not just on this Town Board, but everyone here in town. And certainly, we are doing our best to protect all of you, and we will do our best to share information as we get it. And please contact us, and I'll provide more information. We'll provide more information tonight that I think is relevant from the governor to share. Lastly, we've been on calls with the County Department of Health. They've been sharing information. I won't reiterate it. Ivy already has. But we are staying abreast, all of us. So thank you, Ivy.
Thank you, Jeremy. So one of the areas of greatest concern for residents, as well as for your Town Board, is with regard to our local businesses and their economic viability during these uncertain and certainly inauspicious times. Please understand that this is an issue of critical importance to all of us. We are deeply invested in finding opportunities to support and promote our business community. This is an issue, of course, that has no town borders. And we have been discussing this on our regular emergency management calls with the county government, as well as with our state-elected officials and our peers in local governments throughout Westchester County. While we are admittedly, as you can hear, focused right now on emergency response issues, simply things like making sure we have sufficient hand sanitizers for first responders and masks for our first responders, we, as a Town Board, have also begun to brainstorm economic development solutions. And to that end, I wanted to ask Councilwoman Lauren Levin to explain some of the next steps that the town is taking in cooperation with the Chapua Millwood Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you so much, Ivy. So in partnership with the Chapua Millwood Chamber of Commerce, the first step is we created a directory of over 30 merchants and restaurants that are providing, and these include food and beverage and boutique-style stores that are providing free delivery, as well as curbside pickup or both. And for the most part, we've posted it on the Chapua Moms Facebook page. We've posted it on the Town of Newcastle Facebook page. And we just encourage folks to check out that list. It's a really comprehensive list of who we have, and we're constantly updating it. And folks who would like to be included on that list, any business who would like to be included on that list, you can email me at llevin@mynewcastle.org, and it will be easily updated. And just some numbers here. There are over 12,000 people who are on the Chapua Moms Facebook page. And if 20% of those people spend $20 in our town's center, like for any merchant, whether it's ANS in Millwood, or it's Hip Kid, any merchant at all, that would generate $50,000 in our local town. So please consider calling up a store, take a day off, and order yourself some dinner because they'll deliver it to you. And, you know, get a free delivery of wine. That's also a nice break for having the kids at home. So, you know, we're working really hard with the Chapua Millwood Chamber of Commerce. And next week, we plan on organizing a Zoom meeting with the merchants, as well as the business professionals, to devise plans and strategies on how we can get through this tough time. And it is without saying that we're all in this together. And as we move forward, moving forward as a group and mobilizing together will have the greatest impact. So thank you very much.
Great. Thanks, Lauren. And I just want to underscore that if anybody who is watching the meeting tonight has any ideas to proffer, please reach out to Lauren, who's the sort of point person on the Town Board around this issue right now, or reach out to the Town Board at townboard@mynewcastle.org. And just before we move on to tonight's agenda, I just wanted to check with the rest of the Town Board members if anybody has anything with regard to the coronavirus and the town's response that they wanted to add.
No, other than the wonderful job that Jeremy's done to keep our town moving forward.
Here, here. Jill, any updates we missed from your end at Town Hall?
No, I just wanted to add to Lauren's list that there was a community newsletter that went out tonight as well that encompassed all of the information as well. It's a very impressive list. So shop local still.
And I also want to say, actually, I did take time off, and I used three of those places already, and it all worked seamlessly, which has been great. And also, just, I've been getting a lot of questions. So I did want to highlight it's in the newsletter that came out, but just that we fully anticipate that our water and electricity will remain working as usual. So people shouldn't worry.
Thanks, Lisa. Okay, with all of that said, let's dive into the agenda. So the first thing that's on our agenda tonight is a continuation of a conversation that we started last month regarding the $1.5 million settlement payment that the town has received from Sonnet Greenfield. And I know that everybody on the Town Board is sort of aware of that payment and the way, the sort of restrictions around how it is meant to be used. But I thought, you know, kind of for those who might be watching us, that I would just start by sort of reading the guidance and the language that talks about how that payment was going to be used. So, and I'm now quoting, "Provide the town with $1.5 million to be utilized by the town in its sole discretion to create and/or improve recreational trails, facilities, and other recreational opportunities to study and/or implement improvements to the town's existing business hamlets, and/or to undertake other such initiatives to reduce impacts associated with the Chapua Crossing development as the town deems advisable." So with that, sort of, all of that said, the conversation that we are having tonight is around what has been spent to date out of that $1.5 million, as well as what is remaining. And so Jill, do you want to start maybe by sort of summarizing for everybody what has been spent to date out of that?
Sure. So the Town Board, over the past year or so, has approved a number of projects to move the town forward. Expenditures include our basketball court and an inclusive playground in back of Town Hall, which is really moving along tremendously well. Our contractor has been able to take advantage of the very mild winter, and the basketball court is really taking shape. We expect the asphalt plants to be opening by the end of March. I think it's March 23rd. And at that point, we'll be actually able to see some real progress. They'll be able to actually lay down the asphalt base for the basketball court and for the playground. So we, so far, we have spent $308,000 of that. Discover Chapua, which is a conversation that we're going to continue this evening, that has to do with our, our plan to educate the rest of the world about what a wonderful place Chapua is to live and shop and eat, and more on that a little bit later. The next is also our rezoning projects. So the Town Board undertook to hire Kim Lee Horn to reexamine our present zoning in the hamlet and to introduce the idea of the form-based code. We are in the midst of doing that. This is consistent with the master plan, the comprehensive plan that was approved in 2017, and the Town Board has been moving forward with it. So Rob Deary is also on our call this evening, but he's prepared an Excel sheet for us. And basically, to date, we have, out of the $1.5, $668,000 has been committed to ongoing projects. With that said, I know that the board is interested in some additional expenditures. And the board thought that this would be a good time for us to take stock of and see where the money has been sent so far, what's remaining, and what's the best use of the money going forward.
So I think this is a hard, this is a hard conversation to have virtually. But I thought maybe in preparing for this meeting, maybe the way to try to go about it would be just to sort of go through kind of a roll call and maybe go around the horn and see what everybody's kind of thoughts and ideas were about the remaining $668,000. I will go first, though, and, you know, but certainly, everybody, I think, is prepared to weigh in with their thoughts on this. So from my perspective, we're going to be talking next about the facade improvement grant program, which has a total dollar value associated with it of $150,000. I support using the funding for that program. I also support the remaining funding for the expansion of the Discover Chapua program, which I know Lauren's going to talk about when we get to her priorities. And I cannot recall what the dollar value was, Lauren, that you've got against that. But I had jotted down something like $75,000. I'm sure you'll walk us through it. And then the only other thing I had identified as a priority of mine for that remaining funding is that, Jill, I know we had talked about potentially extending the, or adding to the contract with Barton &amp; Le Judas for the Chapline project for a small dollar amount associated with grant writing. And so I can't recall, I think, is it about $10,000?
I'm waiting for a new proposal for them for the CMAC grants. I haven't received it yet, but my recollection was it was between $10,000 and $15,000 for those, for preparation of those grants.
So that would be the other thing that I've identified as a priority for me. And then my preference would be to leave the balance, which roughly comes out to about $430,000 if you subtract out all of the things that I mentioned. My recommendation would be to leave that balance whole for now, with an understanding that it might be used towards the Chapline. I would just caution everybody that if the Chapline were to move forward, we know that it is a multi-million dollar project. And so that's why grant writing becomes critical, is because we are looking at, you know, seven figures here. So anyway, that said, I would leave the balance untouched to be able to apply towards the Chapline or towards unforeseen sort of things we may need to use it for, both in light of the crisis that's going on right now, but also just in terms of being able to be creative and flexible as we start to roll out some of these things and see what the needs are that exist. So that's me. And we can just maybe, Jeremy, do you want to speak next? And then we'll go, kind of go through the roll call here.
Sure. I agree with all of what you just said. We have been discussing the facade project, the hamlet, for some time, both when you and I served together, Ivy, as well as during the campaign season, and subsequently since we've been sitting together. So I'm full supporter that I'm in agreement with what you discussed. And I also think that it is a smart and prudent measure to make sure that we don't just spend money cavalierly, which we are not, but those dollars that you mentioned that we should sit on and figure out what if and how it can be used later on. I do want to make clear, for example, I think I have heard before about some people will discover Chapua. Why discover Chapua? But the monies are for the hamlet. It doesn't mean that we're ignoring anything else. And as people know or should know, there was a $250,000 grant for Park, and we're dedicated over there as well. There's a lot of things we're looking into, even sidewalks. But we have to be smart about it and leave a lion's share, a significant amount of those dollars, once we see things unfold, especially with some uncertainty coming down the road with the coronavirus impacting revenues and tax dollars. But otherwise, I'm in full support of what you just mentioned.
Okay, thanks. I think Lisa, you're next. We can't hear you.
Sorry, it took me a second to unmute it. Okay. So I had some ideas, and those have changed slightly in, basically in reactions to Corona. And because I feel like our merchants are, are or will become in a significantly worse position than they were. And, you know, that money is supposed to be used to really help to, in my view, kind of revitalize Chapua and mitigate, mitigate effects both for Chapua Crossing, but also, you know, to help our hamlet to thrive and survive. So I do think, to echo what you said, that some of it should be used for the Chapline. Granted, we are going to be able to use grants, hopefully, and we don't know how much that's going to cost. We're certainly going to have to bond for it if we can't reach all the grants potentially. But I did want to make sure that we did, you know, hold a significant balance for that potentially. And if we find we don't need it, and we are getting enough grant money, we will certainly find another area to use that. That being said, I've been thinking about it and how kind of I want to utilize that money to bring people downtown after we're allowed to go outside, and, you know, really revitalize our downtown. Now, I understand the facade improvement. I have talked, and I think a couple of other, or at least one other council member may have also talked to merchants, since then, many merchants don't think they will probably utilize that. And my concern is, you know, if construction damaged somebody's property, they kind of have a claim anyway. But my concern is that a lot of that money may go to landlords, as opposed to our merchants, who are really the ones we want to help go through this. The landlords are getting their rent anyway. It's really the merchants who we're trying to help. So I'm a little hesitant, and especially after speaking to some merchants, that we might not want to utilize the full 150. Maybe we want to, we do want to start with Phase 1, see, and even potentially increase. I know we said $1,000 matching initially in Phase 1. Maybe we want to increase that to 1,500, but kind of stop there and see if it's utilized. And, you know, if it is, we can decide to go forward from there. Other things I was thinking about, I love the Discover Chapua. There are some things, Lauren, in the budget, and I know we're going to talk about that later, that do relate to Millwood, and I think we can't use this money for that. So I would take those out. There were just some events that were in Millwood, like Millwood Movies, which are great, and I think we should do. But I don't know that it should come out of these funds. But I don't know that it should come out of these funds. My one concern, and I'd love to hear your views on this too, is that some of, you know, a lot of the discovered Chapakua, while they're great events and they are going to draw people downtown, they're not permanent. So, you know, I don't know, I had some other ideas. It's not, it's clearly, I think it was only like $85,000. And if you take out Millwood, it's probably to Ivy's point closer to 75. So I think we should talk about that. The other things I've just been hearing from residents thinking would be nice, you know, during Christmas time and the holiday time and we had all the lamp, the new lampposts that we installed when all of those were lit with the lights. So many people said our town looks so beautiful, I want to walk around here at night, it looks great. And then they came off at the end of the season. So if it's something that we could invest in maybe permanent lights or permanent decor on those poles that maybe would change with the seasons. So we're having garlands there in the, in the winter, but maybe we want something red around Valentine's Day and something spring and just so that it's lit up, so just the town looks more beautiful and it's more enticing to come. It's not going to be a huge amount of money. I estimated around $10,000 to $15,000 maybe, but that's something I think we should consider. Also, this is a little out of the box, but I'd like to get kids and families downtown a little more. We could find places to put commercial outdoor ping pong tables in town. They don't take up a lot of room. There are about, two of them would be approximately $4,000. We could put one near the rec field, one potentially in or near the pocket park or somewhere there. And you will get kids who are coming downtown to play those games and parents who are going to come meet them downtown. And maybe then they're going to buy coffee and they're going to walk around and shop. So I think anything to draw people downtown, even on a more permanent basis, would be a good use of that money. It's not a lot. And also potentially putting art around town, more revolving sculptures, putting money toward, and I know Lauren, this was on yours also, but for the Arts and Culture Committee, putting money towards some murals downtown. We have, the Arts and Culture Committee has met, we have amazing artists that we can line up. They're a little more than was in your budget, Lauren, but they're great and well-known artists. And if we really decided to go full-blown on that, it would be something that people would come down to. Actually, we could even do tours a couple of times a year of the art around town. So those are my thoughts.
Great, thanks Lisa. So Lauren, you're next.
Thanks Ivy. Okay, um, well, so I put the proposal together for Discover Chapakua and I, and forgive me because I know the wording for the money was, it sounded like it was only for the downtown hamlet. However, Chapakua Crossing is still affecting the Millwood Hamlet. I know that people, I mean, DeChico's was affected, AMS and Millwood was affected by Whole Foods opening in Chapakua Crossing. So that's why I layered in Millwood items for a total of $85,000 for the Discover Chapakua budget. And for the most part, how I, how I put this together, I've worked with Ike at Parks and Rec to figure out how much a lot of these events would cost because he's executed so many of these types of events in his former position in, I believe it was Harrison or Greenberg. And he has close connections with people in Briar Cliff and Rye. And so replicating what they've done, for example, in Briar Cliff, they, they do a firework show on Briar Cliff Day. And if we could get fireworks here for the Fourth of July, I think would be a really amazing event for the town and for the merchants and building on something like that is a level one event where we get people in town for the week. And it's a very patriotic movement and it's all about shopping in town, having, you know, having food outdoors and gathering and, and, you know, getting ready for the fireworks. And as far as a level two event, basically putting together something, you know, that's not as big as getting over 100 people. And, and this would include like movies in the Millwood Park and, or a big bonfire for the holiday season. And for art and vacant spaces, my thought process here was to leverage the vacant registry that Ivy and Jeremy and Jason had put together and, you know, reach out to these building owners and find out if we can showcase some art in those huge windows. And so that they don't look basically, you know, dilapidated or dead, they look more interesting. And even partner with the art center at Town and Rec and get kids' art in those windows just so parents will come into town and see their kids' art displayed in the windows, I think would be really fun. And lastly, just to bring some weekly animation, it's like a retail word, but basically a level three type of event would be bringing a clown or a balloon maker or some magician at, like in the middle of town or lower King Street who can perform for two hours. I mean, it's not a huge cost, but we could do it weekly. And it could be like a wacky Wednesday or summer music on August, on August Wednesdays as well for adults who have, you know, who are walking around town and I, and just enjoying the nice weather. And the remainder of the budget of the 85,000 is really just improving the streetscapes and doing final touches. For example, the alley between the two nail salons, adding string lights, cafe tables. You know, it's next to Starbucks, it's next to the Chapakua Village Market, people can sit and gather there. Also in Millwood, just to add some, some more plantings and planters and some nice touches on the light poles around the corner. And lastly, the area around Great Stuff, you know, for the most part, that would be just beautifying that wall because that wall, Petticoat Lane is pretty bare right now. And now that we have tables and chairs there, it'd be really nice to just get, you know, some, some like nice features on that wall. And for advertising and marketing, I just basically went through this with Lyle from his years of experience working at TV Guide and also just working in various roles in marketing. He, you know, gave me good advice on what it would cost to create just a video marketing campaign for the town of Chapakua, something that is just a really good video where we get a shot of people eating dinner at Le Jardin and having their mussels and fries or Erin at Quaker Hill Tavern pouring a beer. You know, one of those like really good mood pieces that really like brings the website together. And also Ivy had mentioned this, which I thought was a really great idea, is investing in some really good signage, like wayfinding signs that tell people where these restaurants are located in town, where parking is located, because a lot of people don't even know there's parking behind the hardware store. So a lot of these costs, like the streets, like basically half of these costs wouldn't be recurring costs because it's marketing and, and streetscape stuff. It, it's really the events that would cost a lot every year. But if we created a proven schedule where we got the people in town, I'm going to take a guess that people are going to want to come to these events after this period of time and to see people. If we get the success, the following year, we can get sponsorships. We can cut this budget down year after year, you know, and, and try to lower the, the responsibility from the town. As far as the remainder of the budget goes for the chapline money, I do think it's incredibly important that we hold off on a huge sum of it just because we don't know what's going to happen after we get through this. And we don't even know, you know, I know there has been many talks through the state and, and through the federal level where people, you know, the government really wants to provide support for businesses or small businesses, whatever that may be. In any event, I agree with all of you that we do have to hold off on a large amount of money so that we have just that reserve for us. And what's nice about this is that we have so much flexibility with it. I also agree that a portion of it would be really helpful towards grant writing for the chapline and funding for the chapline. I think that that project is a really viable project that can really help downtown and, and increase the quality of life for so many of our residents. And lastly, in regards to the facade improvement program, I, I talked to Jason with, about this earlier today. I think it's a great program. I, I think that in regards to addressing like the first level issues, you know, addressing, you know, providing money for like $1,000 to up to, you know, update like basic stuff like painting or whatever it is for merchants at the first level would be really great on the short term. In the long term, my only hesitation with committing $150,000 for three years just kind of worries me. So, you know, I, I did reach out to a few of the landlords in town to ask their opinion and, and some of them did say to me that right now, like right now, that, and this was pre the coronavirus period, but they did say that they weren't looking for money for facade improvement programs. And they talked to a few of the other merchants in town and they didn't seem super focused on it. And I, I think to Lisa's point, it's important to see how successful it is year after year to figure out like what works and what will really help our, our local business owners. So that's that. And I apologize for the lengthy explanation.
That's great. Thanks Lauren. And so last, but certainly not least, Jason.
Sure, so I'm going to be somewhat brief or succinct as best as I can because I do agree with a lot of what was said and it's not necessarily worth repeating what everyone said. I do think that we need to incentivize the, both the people who own the buildings and the people who are, who run business in downtown to, to beautify their buildings, to beautify their storefronts and so forth. So I do think there is value to making sure that, that we find ways to incentivize them to make those changes and to, to beautify their, their buildings. I am optimistic, though a little bit cautiously optimistic, but optimistic about Discover Chapakua and what it can bring to our town as a, as an overall program. I agree with Lisa on, on, we should be investing in things that will enhance our town on a permanent basis. I think there's a, there's something to it and I think we should be prudent with the balance of this, of this fund. And we should be able to work on opportunities and ideas as they arise. So not looking to spend all of it as, you know, as the, at this point in time and just be, be somewhat prudent with it.
Great. So I don't think we needed to make any decisions, substantive decisions tonight about how to use the 1.5. I think we just wanted to have the opportunity to have a conversation among the town board members prior to making any funding decisions so that we understood what things were potentially coming down the pike and how we might use the, the money. The one thing that I did sort of take, I don't know if other people had recommendations for next steps, but the one note that I sort of scribbled down to myself as I kind of heard some of the ideas, Lisa, that you were articulating and in reviewing your proposal, Lauren, for Discover Chapakua, I do think there's a next step to have you, Lauren, come back to the town board with sort of the, the, you know, kind of revised proposal for Discover Chapakua and for us to have a conversation about that, to be able to, to fund that program. And my recommendation in terms of a next step would be actually for you to engage with the Arts and Culture Committee around some of the ideas that Lisa mentioned around sort of art around town and, and the ability to do sort of public art installations and other such activities. So I think that's something that if we could bake that in and maybe sort of marry those two concepts, that might be sort of the next step. Do other people have ideas on next steps here?
Just one thing I wanted to mention, and I had mentioned it to Lauren, was that regarding the streetscape improvements, I do believe that there is funding, well, a couple of things there. If we're talking about beautification for either Millwood or the downtown, as far as plantings go, again, we have a significant funding source in the tree bank where we could remove these items from the Discover Chapakua budget and basically, well, under this budget and just fund them from the tree bank, which would free up money for other things. And we have $11,000 under the capital project for additional benches. And I'm just wondering if maybe, you know, those, those benches would be like in front of the community center, maybe in front of town hall, we already have benches there, but it would just be, you know, continuing the, the new black benches. But I'm just wondering if maybe it might be okay for us to substitute out the cafe furniture instead and just sort of be a little prudent with the expenditure. The other benches are there, they don't really impact the streetscape all that much. And I think that the cafe tables in that little alley would give a little bit of charm. We have an in-house electrician who could do the, the lighting if we can get the permission of the two property owners. I can hear Nick scribbling furiously saying, what are we, what are we using private buildings for? So we will, we will take care of that. But I, I am listening. But, but that, that would really be my, my only suggestion insofar as that goes because we would have another funding source and maybe we wouldn't have to pay this entire amount out of the 1.5.
I just remembered something actually that I meant to include in my priorities and it slipped my mind. But Lauren, I had mentioned this to you earlier and so I don't know if this is something that should be included in kind of under the Discover Chapakua budget or whether it's something we should think about drawing down from the 1.5 for. But the prior town board had started a discussion with the streetscape committee and with Adam specifically around wayfinding signs. And if we can figure out a way to pick that back up, whether it's, again, whether it's through Discover Chapakua or through the streetscape committee, which you were a part of as well, or if it's something that we need to figure out a different mechanism to, to jumpstart. Just I think that especially now that we'll have our playground and basketball court and, and, you know, sort of some beautiful things to highlight downtown, improving some of the signage that we have and making it look consistent and, and beautiful is something that I'd like to do as well.
Yeah, that's actually a biggie. Thanks. That was.
Good question. The alley where you're referring to, that's across from Scattered Books, is that the one you're referring to?
Yeah.
Because I had thought, when I had asked in the past about seating, for example, by Billarinas and that alley.
That's a fire access, right?
Fire access, there's no, there's going to be no issue?
No.
All right.
That, yeah, that, that was the problem with that one. It, it seems counterintuitive, but that's actually, yeah, that, that is the fire access for One South Greeley. So we can't put anything permanent there. So we can't put.
Maybe a table that can be movable is considered.
You'd have to clear it with Russell Maitland. I don't, I, I think he would, yeah, I think it would be an issue. I think, I think the fire department had some real issues, as did Tom.
Okay, so I think, thank you so much Jill, because to your point, I think that, I, I think if I'm hearing correctly, folks are, are really positive about the sprucing out the alley between the nail salons. And we can start going through work on that and just kind of contacting the private, the private owners about the string lights and seeing what the total, total number is. And if, if it is within that bench budget, then that, I, I mean, for me, that does make sense to, to use that money to, to fund this because I think that you get more bang for your buck with this sort of five versus adding, you know, finishing off the benches.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have a significant number of benches in town. We could, I think we're, we're doing okay. They look fabulous and, yeah.
And then Ivy, to your point, I'll reach out to the Arts and Culture Committee and to Adam about the signs. And we'll see how we can move forward with that.
Yeah, Lauren, we've actually made some decent headway about murals, so we should definitely circle up on that.
Great.
We want to move on to the facade improvement program?
Yeah, great, thanks. So the, the other thing that we have on the agenda tonight before we talk about the mystery of items is to pick back up our conversation about the facade improvement grant program. And I just wanted to preface, preface this conversation by noting that this is actually a program and a proposal that we've been working on for weeks and months. It does predate the current crisis. And I personally feel that it's important to move forward with this program because it's a way to provide direct financial assistance to businesses, which we've explored ways of doing before and are very limited in our ability to do so. So personally, I'm supportive of continuing to move this forward. However, I don't want anyone to think that I'm suggesting that this program is going to help businesses back, bounce back from the current crisis. As we noted sort of at the top of the meeting, there are other plans in the works. There will be more ideas to come in that regard. there are other plans in the works. There will be more ideas to come in that regard. So with that said, I thought I would just do a really quick sort of overview of the facade grant improvement program for those who are not familiar with it yet. So hold on just a second. I'm just gonna share my screen. Okay, so hopefully everybody can see this. I'm trying to get it to go to, oh, there we go. Okay. So a facade improvement grant program. What is it? The program is an incentive program to encourage property owners and businesses to improve the exterior appearance of their buildings and their storefronts. The program is a way, as I mentioned earlier, of being able to provide direct financial assistance to property owners and to merchants. The purpose, as we've described here, the facade grant improvement program will assist property and business owners in rehabilitating commercial facades of their properties, which will create a positive visual impact, stimulate economic activity, and really complement and build on the investment that we've just made over $15 million in improving the town's infrastructure and streetscape. There has been a lot of research on these kinds of programs. They've existed for well over 10 years that the improvements in terms of aesthetics will improve overall property values downtown, improve marketability of space within the buildings that are being improved, and also draw businesses and residents to the area. Some of the benefits, I just went over to attract businesses and shoppers to the hamlet. But really, in my mind, that it's hard for me to talk about this program without talking about the infrastructure and streetscape and how this came to be. So you know, really, over the course of the past, you know, two, now three years, our businesses downtown, as well as our residents have been coming to the town, have been coming to town board members and begging us to provide some sort of assistance to these businesses to help them recover from the impacts of the construction. And in researching what viable alternatives existed out there to be able to provide that kind of direct assistance, the town as a municipality is very severely limited in terms of what we're able to do to assist individual businesses. It really has to be something where you're improving the overall vitality of the hamlet as opposed to providing any kind of assistance to an individual business. This matching grant program is a proven solution that has existed in other places, and I'll talk about some of that later on. And as I say here, the owners and the tenants of the properties in surrounding areas are also often motivated to make improvements. And you know, we've seen some of that downtown already where some businesses have started to, you know, really spruce up and take good care of their the look of their facades. And it does have sort of that kind of ripple effect. And that's what we want to encourage because it will really help to amplify what we've done in terms of the beautification and then the streetscape project. So what's being discussed? Phase one is a 50% matching grant that can be applied for for a up to a maximum grant amount of $1,000. So that would be a total amount of a $2,000 project. Phase two is a 50% matching grant up to a maximum grant amount of $7,500. And it should be noted that phase two goes into effect after the adoption of the form-based zoning code, which is currently under discussion. And the reason for that is that there are design guidelines that are then baked into that form-based code that can be adhered to. And it really comes into play where we want to encourage property owners to come into compliance with that code. The grant applications will be processed on a first come, first served basis. I'm proposing a maximum town expenditure of $150,000 across both phases. I think it's really important to note that we are not committed to spend $150,000. We would earmark that money for this program. But we would not be required to spend it. So if we did not get a sufficient number of viable applications across phase one or across phase one plus phase two to come close to spending that dollar amount, we wouldn't need to do so. We've also baked into the program design gates so that after phase one, we would look at do sort of a program evaluation where we would then look at the success of the program. If the program isn't successful and isn't meeting our needs, we can either tweak the program or we can just continue it. So it would be a maximum expenditure of $150,000, but it is not a commitment to spend that money if we find that it's not successful. And I think we have to be really thoughtful about how we evaluate the program to make sure that we are making an impact with this money because as we've just discussed, there are lots of great ideas. So the grants would be issued on a reimbursement basis after the after the project is complete and there's documentation about how the money was expended. And then through our most recent conversations, we have now zeroed in on the fact that we would be willing to accept one application per property or per tenant per phase. The program term that we've described is for three years. That's also something that's come out of our recent conversations as a board. We had it open ended before. We felt that we needed to time limit this in a way. So we put in a time limit of a total of three years with the opportunity to extend that if all the funding hasn't been spent at but we're finding the program successful, or if we feel that, you know, we need additional time to roll out the kinds of changes that we've seen. And as I mentioned before, we will have gates and checkpoints. So between phase one and phase two, as well as on an annual basis, we will review and evaluate the success of the program. This here, we've discussed this multiple times before, is just a list of what the potentially eligible projects are, as defined by the program description. Signage, lighting, painting, facade repair, brick masonry, cornices or roof cables, onings or canopies, windows or door replacements, and rear entrance replacements. And quickly, I, after our last conversation, I just did some benchmarking just to demonstrate some of the places where this has been done before. And you know, so you can see it ranges from large cities. Albany, I don't know if you consider that a large city. I do. So, you know, places like Albany, which has spent, you know, upwards of $500,000 on programs like this to even smaller cities, places like Madison, Connecticut, which actually has a population that's very similar to ours, which actually has spent $1.3 million to date on these kinds of programs. And I think that's the reason that this came up as sort of a best practice for, you know, kind of encouraging improvements and encouraging and driving economic development in in hamlets or small cities. And also the reason I think that the rest group came to us with this recommendation as part of the package of recommendations that they made related to the form-based code. So that's actually everything that I had. I'm gonna stop sharing my screen. And so I just wanted to note that the version of the program description that was in the packet for review this evening does not include the comments that we received after the publication of the packet, which was on Friday. And specifically, specifically, Lisa, we had received some comments from you about wanting to limit the total project cost for which property owners or merchants would be would be eligible to apply for this program. So I thought maybe we could just start there. And if you wanted to kind of describe what your recommendations were with regard to sort of eligible versus ineligible projects.
Okay, well, hang on. Now I gotta find that document. So.
I just sent it to you.
Oh, okay. That's, I don't have town email on this computer, though.
Why are you looking?
I'm sorry. I don't mean, yeah, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, no, no. Do you want me to send it to your, I can send it to your.
We can start with anybody else who wants to sort of chime in. I can talk about it in general before we get to that. Those comments in general were made to not just limit the cost, but I, my concern was that I just if we were going to do this facade improvement, if the point was to really help kind of recoup some, you know, business that's been lost. Thanks, Jill. I just got it. And but also I wanted to make sure that given the fact that we are redoing our zoning and having a zoning code, that it wasn't taken advantage of and being utilized for something that we didn't intend it to be used for. So that's mainly what those what those comments were, which I will, I will go over briefly in a second. But just before we get there, a couple of things I wanted to consider that weren't in that. And that's because those comments came out kind of before this real coronavirus kind of really got heated and we realized the impact this is going to have on businesses everywhere, around the world, really. But I, I'm even a little more concerned just with the, I get where you're coming from, Ivy, and I get why you want to do this. But I'm concerned with the 150 that we're just gonna have such a horrible impact to our town as a result of, you know, what's happening with all the businesses basically being forced to close and people not leaving their homes. It's going to be a much more obviously global problem. And I'm kind of thinking that I'd like to reserve some of that money because we don't know what we're going to need it for. And I don't necessarily see the rush right now in dedicating 150,000 when we certainly know phase two, the way it's currently written, isn't coming into effect for a while yet. So I'd love to kind of commit if we're going to do this potentially to phase one and then see where we are because I'm just concerned with the impact that that the coronavirus is going to have on our town, all our merchants and and our landlords, too. So that's kind of where I'm coming from a bit. If I go to the document, do you want me to, do you want me to walk you through the changes specifically?
Yeah, I don't know if everybody else needs that. I've read through the changes that the one about sort of limiting the overall value of the proposed project work was the only one that I had a question about. The others, I think, were actually included in a more recent version. So it was the other comments were with regard to the sort of one product, one one.
One grant.
Yes, yes, again.
My comments, for some reason, some came out in blue and some came out in red. I don't know why. But they're, they're all mine. I don't know what happened. And some were just minor changes. But so the reason I was getting to the the project amount was really, my concern was that since even though phase two isn't going to affect until after the new zoning code is adopted, phase one could still potentially, I think, still be in effect. But my concern was that I didn't want to come, and I mentioned this before, and I couldn't figure out how to really articulate it so well. But my concern was I didn't want a developer to come in to take advantage of our new zoning code, which has already increased their property value because now you can potentially, depending on where it is, build higher or larger or whatever it may be. And that would, that would, in essence, already increase their property values. So I didn't want someone to come in to take advantage of the new, let's say, extra two stories they can put on. And just for the public, we have not agreed to anything. I'm just using examples. But I didn't want somebody to come in and essentially take a project that they were going to do to realize the increased value that we basically just granted them by amending the zoning code and take work that they would have done anyway, but somehow be able to apply under phase two, especially for monies that would offset monies that they would have to spend as part of a larger development project. And I don't know if I'm articulating it correctly. So the reason why I put those dollar amounts in is because my guess was that what we're looking to have them do in phase one and phase two aren't inherently hugely expensive and we're, we're matching that, but that to develop, to add on additional stories, et cetera, is significantly more expensive. So I was trying to find kind of a happy medium where the, the amount that they're asking for under the grant would be used in the way we intended to use and not to basically subsidize a larger project.
And I just want to point out that in section four, under ineligible projects, there is language in there that says the cost of new construction, repair, replacement of a roof, work that principally involves minor repairs or routine maintenance, landscaping or paving are not eligible under the program. So I think we've been, we've included that language to try to exclude developers from being able to leverage this funding for new construction.
But that wouldn't be routine building upkeep or repair or placement of a roof. This is much larger. This could be replacement of windows, doors, a lot of things that they would have to pay for if they're doing a larger construction project. So I kept in that it shouldn't be included for things that revolve involve routine update that doesn't fall into one of the categories set forth in section three here in or landscaping, paving, et cetera. But my thought in putting those numbers in, and I'm open to discussion on it, I kind of made those numbers up just talking to some architects and builders of what things cost. But it was really to make sure it didn't include what we didn't intend it to be utilized for.
Well, our, you know, to Ivy's point, well, it's potentially codified as to what it can be used for. We also have discretion. So Ivy had mentioned before that if, for example, not enough people ask, you're not going to spend it. But there's also the flip of that. Even if enough people ask, we still don't have to spend it provided because it's discretionary. Is that not correct?
Well, it is, except that, as Nick will tell you, we cannot decide things
arbitrarily.
nilly. We have to treat everyone the same. So if one person comes in and we don't, just don't like their project, I'm not sure that we could say no and not be sued by and then someone claim we're being arbitrary and capricious.
Right. And I think, and Nick could shed more light on this. I don't necessarily deal with this particular area of law, but there are times when you look at legislative intent and purpose and the spirit of whatever's been drafted to decide what those who drafted had intended. And you're right, it's not necessarily the intention of some giant developer to come in and what it's saying that is happening, who put up a mega building and then spend money he or she would have otherwise spent. Correct. But I think it could be the language, maybe if it has to be tightened up, so it could allow us that that discretion as well as referencing the language that Ivy said would be in the code. Nick?
Well, a couple of things. The ultimate arbitrator is going to be the building inspector is going to make the final determination as to whether a grant application should be granted or denied. And he's going to be, you, he or she will be using the criteria that is in here. It's going to be determined on a case by case basis. So I think the building inspector has experience with exercising discretion and can apply a program like this. And we've looked at other programs, and I agree, we can go back and look to make sure that Tom has the appropriate standards in here. But Tom was comfortable with this document when we reviewed it. And I share Lisa's concern, but I think it's one that can be can be addressed through making sure Tom understands how it has to be applied.
Yeah, I mean, I was trying to basically codify some of it so that we could pick out some of the more discretionary, you know, issues here. And then also, I don't know if you could see on the document, but I had a comment in there that a lot of the work we want this to cover, like facade improvement, et cetera, could be considered minor repairs and routine maintenance. So I wanted to make sure that we didn't somehow knock that out.
I saw that.
I agree that we should, you know, mitigate the ability for people to go and take advantage of this program. Completely understand. But I think enough safeguards are in place with the way it's written. So let's take one particular scenario. Let's say someone were to have $100,000 project that is still applying for this, this program. It depends on what they're looking, I would still think our building inspector could go and help make the call as to whether it's in the spirit of this program or not.
Well, and the list of ineligible projects, Lisa, I think, does address those. Well, and the list of ineligible projects, Lisa, I think does address those, and I see the language you've added. But it's, I think it makes it clear that it's not new construction. It's not improvements in connection with a project that exceeds a certain dollar amount. And repairs, replacement of a roof. And so what we really need to look at is the language up in section three that I think. Does provide Tom with that appropriate guidance. I'll certainly look at it. Tom and review it again.
That, that's the language that I added, the one you just quoted.
Okay.
But what's wrong with, with someone taking and putting on a new roof? Is that something that's excluded? Why is that an issue?
I think we, it is excluded. I didn't write that in there. That was already excluded.
I mean, why, if somebody's gonna make, you know, needed infrastructural, you know, structural repairs to a building. I mean.
Cause I. I think Jill, the intent was initially to have it improve the facade.
Outward, outward appearance of the building. If there is a portion of the roof that's, I guess they're all, they're all flat. Is that the problem?
No, there is. Ability for new cornices, for the roof gables, so new on it. So there, there are pieces that can still be done.
Okay. To my mind, new windows, doors, they're all, you know, are gonna make the, the building look significantly better from the outside.
Placement of a roof.
Lost you.
Correct, correct. So I, I, I think we're all just struggling for who is gonna talk next. I, I would just say that, you know, the, 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 the windows and the doors and roof gables, as we've described. Those things all fall within facade improvements. Whereas the roof starts to get towards the, the routine maintenance and upkeep of the building. It's not something that is going to. Enhance the overall desirability of.
Got it.
The downtown destination as much as it is meant to, you know, that's really the, the. The purview of the, the property owner.
Got it. Got it.
Just to be, to kind of complete my thoughts, I think there are enough safeguards in place to make sure that people aren't taking advantage of this program.
Okay, so I'm sorry. So not, so you don't want any of my comments to be, I'm sorry, I was, there was, phone was ringing. I was trying to not have it bother everybody. Um, okay, so you don't agree with any of those comments then?
No, there were some comments in there that. Some comments that may.
I think you muted yourself, Jason.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah. I could have sworn that most of those comments made specific sense to me if I had opened up the doc on my computer, but I did not. There you go.
And, and what do you guys think in general about the, the total dollar amount in light of? Kind of what might be needed going forward to help our merchants in town in general, no matter however we can later on and. We may have more flexibility. I'm just speculating after all this corona. Through the state or federal where they're gonna allow us to do more than we could have before. And I'd like to make sure we have the money to do that.
Well, we have a significant amount of money. That's lack better term left over. Not only, again, it's in multiple phases and it's, there's no guarantee that we're going to spend that money or for that matter reach to. You, that all those dollars are going to be spent at seventy five hundred dollars or up to seventy five dollars per. And it's over three years as well. So Nick, is there anything that would prevent us from pulling the plug? After we, at some stage along, we say, you know what, we've spent, we've matched one thousand dollars four times or eight times and now there's this great new plan we decided we want to use the monies for. That would benefit from doing so.
No, as long as any applications that you've accepted and committed to would obviously have to be fulfilled, but. If you wish, if you've accepted four and you stop accepting other applications, you have the authority to do so. It's a discretionary program.
Yeah, I would, I would add to that, that in my benchmarking and looking at how other places have implemented this program. Actually, not every place authorizes a total dollar amount at the outset. So a lot of them just set up this program and they don't say upfront how much money there is available for this. Some of them do, but others don't. I had actually initially included it just to give people a sense of what I thought the costs might look like. And also because I thought it was important for us to, to be upfront and be clear about what, what the spend was here potentially. But I don't think that we have to commit in any way. I think we're, we're kind of all saying the same thing, which is like, if it doesn't work, we shouldn't keep spending money on it.
But I, I do think it, it does help with the message that the board is trying to convey to the merchants that, that we are putting our. You know, money where our mouth is, so to speak, and that, you know, we have committed this money and that we're hopeful that it's, you know, things are gonna turn around and. We're gonna be with you on it. We're gonna help you, you know, make the improvements that you need to, to make, which is what they've been asking for.
Although Jill, the money's not necessarily going to the merchants. It may go to the landlord.
It may, but it can also go to the merchants if someone wanted to, you know, do an improvement.
I just think we're increasing their property value already with this, with the code. I don't know that. The landlords need more. As opposed to merchants who do.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Jill. Go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I think if, if everyone is on the same page as reviewing the success of this program. You know, not legislatively, but even monthly to see how many applicants we get and how many folks. Will use, utilize these dollar amounts and there's flexibility in which we say, okay, it's not working. We haven't received. Applications in the last six months because people, you know, are making it up, but like the merchants are like, you know what, I'm not focused on fix, you know, fixing my roof right now. I'm focused on. Buying the merchandise to sell to drive my business, then. I, I think as long as we have the ability to pull the plug, so to say, to speak. Then, then I, I think that we can, you know, we can move forward with this. I think the phase one makes sense to me. And again, like I, I just, I always get very. Conservative when it comes to committing a dollar amount at a certain time, but if everybody is on the same page and saying that. We're going to review this program and see how successful it is, then yeah, let's, let's do it because then that makes sense to me.
Commit's a relative term. It's not commit as a. Showing willingness to commit potentially those dollars, but we're not mandated or required to pull the distance.
Anybody else comments before we move on? Okay, Jill, I'm gonna kick it over to you to do the administrative items.
Okay, so do, what is our next step on this then?
So our next step is to update it based on the comments that we received from Lisa. So those more. The changes that she sent over were not included in the, the draft we, we have in front of us tonight. So we need to incorporate those. Changes that we discussed and then I think we should have it in front of us to approve a resolution next week.
Okay.
We'll work on the next draft.
Yeah, Nick, I, I believe I sent you again Lisa's comments.
I have it. Thank you.
What about the, what about the project caps?
I'm sorry?
What about the project cap? Is that something we're proposing to lead to, to add to the, to add or to not add?
Ivy?
Yeah. So we didn't finish that, that part of the conversation. So thanks for, for bringing it back up. I, so I actually, I had originally thought that was a, a, a good idea and I, I was supportive of it. And then, you know, we had a resident who came to our meeting. Last month and raised the issue of the reconstruction that was happening at. The shop at Doris and Villarina at that, at that building there. And it talked about, well, that's a project that the total ball, dollar value exceeded. You know, any, any sort of cap that we would put on it, but you know, wouldn't we have wanted to? Have funding available for them to be able to, you know, make the kinds of facade improvements that they made because it made a significant difference to the, the construction of that building. So. Kind of with that example, my feeling was that I didn't want to limit the overall dollar value of the, the work that was being done. As long as we continue to have the limits in place around the grant amount that we are providing. And we have the restrictions in place that make clear that the grants that we're providing can't be used for new construction. So that's my, my feeling. I don't know how others feel.
I, I agree. I also think, I think that the restrictions in place will prevent people from taking advantage of the program already.
Anybody else?
I mean, I disagree, but you know that already.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, um, then we will move on to the, the last of the administrative items. We have a payment of claims. Does anybody have the? The last of the emails that came from Diana Cepirelli today with the amounts?
Are we just moving on to resolutions at this point? Sorry.
Yeah, so administrative items is just the. The payment of claims. I just want to know if anyone had seen the email and if they had any questions with it.
No.
Because it was a quite a late addition. I'm sorry about that. Staggered staffing is good in theory. In practice, it's got a couple of kinks in it. Takes us a little longer to do things than we, that's why we have a full staff. That's okay. So. Are you feel comfortable approving it tonight, even though we got a little bit later than we normally do? You all right with it?
It's fine with me. I don't know how others feel.
My board?
Mine with it.
Okay.
I think if Rob's okay with it, dearie, then I'm, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, so every, everything has been reviewed. It's reviewed at the department level at, within my department with Diana and I have the final approval. So, yep.
And then the other item, there's actually two other little administrative items. One is the authorization to purchase gate valves for DPW water unit. Another. Spellbinding purchased by DPW. Everybody's on the edge of their seat. And the only other thing that, that's in here that we hadn't really talked about is. Last week, we approved the water rents, which are delinquent water payments that appear as water rent, on a water rent line on the. County county tax bills that are being prepared. Traditionally, we have included Mount Kisco water rents as well. They're unable to, it is delinquent water payments to the town of Mount Kisco, but for our residents. So this is the only way that Mount Kisco can take in. And recoup the money when the, when the payments have been delinquent. Council has. Raised some questions about this that, that we will address with Mount Kisco going forward, but at this late date, we have done it for a series of years and. We'd like to continue and try to be good neighbors and continue to do this. So I would ask the board's permission to be able to, for our patients to now kick over runs on. That in the, the cost sharing for the water main on counseling that we talked about is going to also be before the board tonight. And if the board's comfortable, then we can start with resolutions. Okay. You good?
Okay, Jason, are you ready with resolutions? You're giving us the thumbs up, so. You're on mute, though.
Still on mute.
Yes.
Sort of like MIT or something.
I've got multiple screens and I don't have a mouse, so I'm moving around. Sure.
Lisa, that was great. I love that.
All right, should I, should I start?
Go ahead. Go for it.
The payment of claims is under a separate cover. I move to approve the claims as submitted by our. Our town administrator and our deputy county administrator and. Controller.
And the amount of sixty three thousand, four hundred twelve dollars and forty four cents for twenty nineteen and for twenty twenty, eight hundred and twenty nine thousand, five hundred and sixty two dollars and ninety two cents.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I move to authorize the purchase of gate valves from Carmel Wind Water. Eighty six Fair Street, Carmel, New York, at the cost of seventeen thousand, seven hundred thirty six dollars. The replacement of valves at the intersection of Hardscrabble Road and Quaker Road for preventative maintenance.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, I, I move to authorize the hiring of Carolina Pratricino. To the position of assistant assessment clerk on a provisional basis pending successful completion of a civil service test. Within the accessories department at an annual salary of sixty one thousand, two hundred forty two dollars and three cents, group three, step three. With effective date of April sixth, twenty twenty, subject to Westchester County Civil Service rules and guidelines and a probationary period of fifty two weeks. Commencing from the permanent appointment to the position.
Before I second Jill, can you briefly just explain to those who are listening or listen to this later, what this position is for, that there was someone who retired previously and why we're hiring now?
Sure. So unfortunately, the, we, Jackie McMahon has, has been our assessment clerk for. Twenty something years and fortunately for her, not so good for us, in February she retired. We tried to fill the position. The position no longer exists in the realm of civil service. Civil service has instead directed us to the position with an assistant assessment clerk. Which we're trying to do. The problem is, is that there is no list for that position, so. This individual is being brave enough to accept the position provisionally, which means that when the test is offered by civil service. She must pass or place in the top three and if she can't, then we can't. So it's really a leap of faith on her part and we're sure it's all gonna work out, but it provisional is always a, a little. And so we appreciate the fact that she's willing to stick with us on this one, but.
It's not new staff, it's replacing old staff.
Exactly right. And actually, our, our old staff, as you can imagine, was at a different group, a higher group and a, a top grade. Along with longevity. She had been here many, many years. This is somebody who's starting out far lower down on the, the totem pole and certainly on the pay grade.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Want me to keep going or does somebody else have a, have it open?
Add it if you want. I move to authorize the rehiring of Matthew Coleman Ariz as a seasonal laborer within the Department of Public Works Highway Unit. At an hourly rate of sixteen dollars per hour effective March eighteenth, twenty twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
And I move to authorize the rehiring of Courtney Speth to the position of part-time intermediate clerk. Within the court clerk's office at an hourly rate of fifteen dollars per hour effective retroactively to March thirteenth, twenty twenty. And that's again, part time. We're only gonna bring her in when we need her.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I, you want me to keep going?
Yeah.
Okay. This is to approve Mount Kisco water rents as tax liens. Resolve the attached scheduled charges for unpaid water for property shown on the tax rolls or hereby fixed and determined by the board. And certified to the supervisor of the town of Newcastle. Such amounts are levied against the real property as set forth on the attached schedule of charges unpaid water. Three, that the same be raised by tax upon the real property in the town of Newcastle. Libel therefore at that time and in the manner provided by the town law and Westchester County Administrative Code. And four, that the amount of such tax be stated in a separate column in the annual tax rolls of the town of Newcastle under a column entitled water rents.
Second.
All in favor?
Anyone else want to go?
It's all you, Lisa.
The big one. Bring it home.
Okay, this is a resolution authorizing the Department of Public Works to coordinate work with Conifer. In furtherance of the town's secondary water main replacement project. Whereas Newcastle's DPW is presently engaged in replacing an obsolete secondary water main in the Chappaqua Business Hamlet. Some of which replacement work has already been completed. And whereas a section of the water main yet to be replaced runs alongside fifty four Hunt's Place where Conifer Realty is presently constructing. A lovely four-story residential. where Conifer Realty is presently constructing a lovely four-story residential building known as Chappaqua Station. And we want to coordinate work that everybody's doing. So therefore be resolved that DPW is authorized to expend labor and materials in an amount not to exceed $26,000 in furtherance of the town's replacement of the secondary water main beneath Hunts Place in the form of, one, a fire hydrant, two, hauling and disposal services for approximately 17 cubic yards of asphalt, and three, hauling services only for approximately 107 cubic yards of excavated soil. And further resolve the foregoing labor materials to be furnished and provided by the town in coordination with Conifer's construction activities for their project. And further resolve the town attorney shall prepare such documents as may be necessary and prudent to implement this resolution, and the town administrator may execute it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't have any more.
I think that's it for us.
All right.
Do you feel like we're the Brady Bunch? Like, you know?
Yeah, I was going to ask, can people watching this see us like the Brady Bunch?
Yes, we'll see.
Ivy moved to the middle and the boys on top.
I moved to adjourn.
But which Brady am I?
We'll leave it alone.
You don't want to know, do you?
Tiger.
I move to adjourn before I get in trouble, please.
Second.
All in favor?